Good evening and welcome to the Wilmer City Council meeting. This is a special meeting and it's being held on Monday, March 31st, 2008 at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dawkins.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thanks Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to everyone in the chambers tonight, the citizens and staff, media, our council members. This is a special meeting due to the fact that the city council wishes to address the street improvement project. This is for 2008. And before we begin, I see we have a handout on the table here. Mick or Mel, could somebody explain what this is?
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is just a summary of the project list for 2008. Of course, this is the same list that was presented to the council earlier this year when enough, there were not enough votes garnered to order the improvements. And as we all are aware, it requires seven affirmative votes to order the improvements. We've already had the improvement hearing, so what we're attempting to do tonight is to get these projects, minus any that will be polled from the agenda, ordered.
And there are no changes in this list compared to the list that was presented more than a month ago? All right. With that, I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Reese, you're the chairman of the Public Works Department, or Public Works Committee, not department. Do you have any comments you wish to make?
Well, I think we still have to address the possible. I mean, we didn't, I believe the last time we took the vote, we didn't have everybody here. So I think we still have to take a vote on it. So I guess from that, Mr. Mayor, I would just make a motion that we approve the project, 2008 Improvement Project, as outlined on this, on this listing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve project number list for 2008. Comment and discussion. Councilmember Swenson.
I'm not sure of the procedure. I would like to pull, and maybe we have to do a different motion, the Garfield School Detention Project, simply because we have another meeting scheduled with the neighborhood. Our last meeting was cut short. And just postpone action on that one until the next council meeting.
Be a motion to amend, to remove Garfield.
Okay, I would make that motion then.
Second. We have a motion and a second to amend the original motion, and that is to remove the Garfield School detention area. Can I ask, a call fire here, do you want to reschedule that, or what do you want to do with that?
Just postpone it until a later date.
Okay. But no specific date to put it back on the agenda at this time?
Is this the right order to do this in?
That's just what you're doing.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, I believe the first council meeting is, in April is on the 7th. The neighborhood meeting is scheduled for the 8th. So with the earliest then, under Councilmember Swenson's motion, would be to reconsider it at the April 21st city council meeting.
Is that what you wish to do then?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll make that part of your amendment to the motion?
That'd be fine.
Okay. So the amendment which has been made and seconded is to remove the Garfield Detention Pond and re, and have it put back on the city council agenda, April 21st?
Yeah.
All right. Further discussion or comments about that? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if, when that, if it's approved to come out, when it comes back up, it would take seven affirmative votes, just like any other improvement project?
Hmm.
Or what does it take to pass that then?
No, no assessments.
There are no assessments?
There are no special assessments at all?
No, no.
None?
Then it would be a simple majority at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments about that amendment to the motion? If not, is this a simple motion or a vote?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Rest is a resolution.
All right. Councilmember Reese.
To staff, is this gonna give any difficulties whatsoever? And?
No. No. We're okay with that.
All right, is this a roll call then Kevin, or just a straight motion?
It need not be your call.
Okay. Let's make that a roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The amendment passes. Now we're back to the original motion. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to amend the resolution by Mr. Reese by taking out 0805 and the second line on 0807. In other words, deleting West Winds Third Edition and the street lighting for West Winds Third Edition, West Winds Estate Third Edition. Due to the fact that there's a hearing in about hour and 15 minutes on the appeal for that particular project.
All right, so you want to pull 0805 and 0807, the second line?
Correct, because they both have to do with West Winds Estate Third Edition.
Did you second him, Mr. Gardner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there is a motion and it's been seconded to remove these two items from the overall project list. Further comment or discussion about that? Councilmember Anderson?
I, I was pointing to Councilmember Gardner. That's, that's what I was doing. I didn't have a question.
Oh, you didn't want to talk? Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our packet that we received over the weekend, there was a mention made of something that the city attorney might have wanted to say in regard to Minnesota statutes regarding local improvement programs. And I think this might be an appropriate time to ask him to bring that to our attention.
Mr. Running, do you wish to make any comments on this?
I'm not sure what Mr. Gardner's referring to unless it's the supermajority. If that's what he's referring to, that only applies for a project that's being financed with special assessments on chapter 429. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. So the implication for this body tonight in regards to, for example, if we were considering Garfield, and if we wanted to consider 0805 and the second line of 0807 separately, those would only require a majority vote of the council, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Point of clarification is, West Winds Estates being assessed for the development over there?
No.
It's not.
No.
It's not being assessed.
No.
So it does not need a supermajority?
That's correct.
To, all right. Any other comments from councilmembers? Mr. Anderson, or, Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the reason Mr. Gardner brought that up and seconded his motion was to offer another motion later in this meeting, would only take a 5-4 vote, or 4-4, excuse me, 5-3 or 4-4 vote, and one being broken by the mayor. And I might add that to do that, you would need a quorum here.
So what's your point?
We'll see after we vote on the motion.
Any other comments from councilmembers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask for clarification from the city attorney regarding a quorum. And I presume that there's a possibility that four members may choose to leave us once we get down to that motion is, and I presume that's what the gentleman is getting at. Do we have a quorum existing as of this point in time? And if four persons leave, do we not have a quorum, or are they simply to be counted as voting present?
You have a quorum right now, but if four people leave, you will no longer have a quorum.
Under the city charter, are there any provisions for bringing those members back to the table, to the council chambers?
The charter makes reference to it, but it doesn't say how to do it.
Well, a little more drama here tonight. We have a motion on the table for an amendment to pull 0805 and 0807 second line. Any other comments on that before we vote? Any other comments? Councilmember Reese?
Well, this is, you know, it's, it's difficult sitting up here in this type of situation and where people feel so very strongly. And it seems that in our discussions in regards to anything with West Winds, that there's an overall perception that the council's either approving or disapproving this project. We don't approve projects. We set policy. And as long as the project developer or the owner has met the policy or the policies that are set by the council, and approval of a project should then be given. But if the council doesn't grant the right for the developer to construct a project that's met all of the requirements set by the policy, the council may face some kind of legal scrutiny for our decision. And if it's scrutinized by the courts, the review would then be of the city's decisions in light of regulations that are at issue, and probably regulations that we've set ourselves. And if in fact, the developer has met the legal standards, then it seems to me that they're entitled to approval. The fact is, the developer seems to me has met all of the requirements that we've set and set by this council. And in order to construct, to the development project, they have to do that. And we have to look at the facts. And truthfully, the popularity of a project or even the developer in this case is not relevant. We have to apply the law according to facts. And are we applying established law and not making arbitrary decisions? I guess I would ask Mr. Running, our city attorney, how much discretion can the city council exercise in decisions such as what we are facing right now?
I think essentially what you said, councilman, is accurate. And if that isn't followed, then it's gonna be up to the court to turn it around, I guess.
So no discretion?
Well, I wouldn't say no discretion, but you don't have a whole lot of discretion is what it really boils down to. If developer follows the ordinances that you've established, then what you said is accurate. They're entitled to their permits.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to read a few lines here out of the League of Minnesota Cities booklet. It's called Land Use Recipe for Success. One of the most common loss control issues for cities is land use. Cities have broad authority to regulate land, but their power is not unlimited, and that's why it can get a little tricky at times. Land use regulations are based on laws spelled out in state statutes and city ordinances. That means when a property owner applies for a land use approval, he or she is applying for approval under a specific law. This article discusses the importance of recognizing, applying, and following the specific law applicable to any particular land use decision. Understanding a city's authority and the requirement of various land use regulations is important to navigate controversy. It may be helpful to think of making land use decisions in the same way as using a cookbook. You have to make sure you have the right recipe and pick the right ingredients. The recipe is the law that tells you what you are deciding and what factors you should consider. The ingredients are the facts presented by a specific situation. Following the right recipe can help ensure a good product because it forces you to gather and consider all the right ingredients. It can help you avoid getting burned by a hot political issue by helping to frame the issue in a neutral manner. This is really important for me. A good process can avoid decisions that look half-baked and will therefore deter litigation. And if litigation does happen, good practice will lead to a full plate of useful information that will help defend lawsuits. In their simplest form, land use decisions present two factors, which law apply and what are the facts? But I want to go back where it says a full plate of useful information. Mr. Reese, I'm not sure that we have been appraised of all of the useful facts, okay? And so I think it behooves us as a council to go back and look at the summary documentation from day one of this project and make sure that we were making decisions based on all of the good useful information. So I would, at some point, call for a review of all of the documentation that covers this project to make sure that the council was in fact appraised, because quite frankly, I don't think we were.
Councilmember Anderson?
You know, with all due respect to everyone, what we're talking about tonight is the projects. We're not talking about, or the street improvement projects. We're not talking about the project that was approved by the planning commission. The city council did not overturn that. That's done. The council has acted on that. What we're talking about tonight are these street improvements. You know, we don't need to be rehashing and rehashing and rehashing. That's done. The policy's been set. The council has decided. Move on. Are we gonna, are we gonna move on with this, or what are we gonna do? I, I don't think we need to talk about the project specifically anymore.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, you brought up some good points. However, it seems that whenever we come up to a conflict like this or an issue, we keep hearing the legal aspect of it. You know, they met all the, they jumped through the hoops, they met all the requirements. We have to let them do it. And I'll state once again, we don't have to. There's a reason that the planning commission sends their minutes to us to be approved. Again, we have a higher calling. They look at the legal aspect of it. Sure, if they, if they meet all the requirements, fine. Comes to us and we say, is it good for Wilmer? What will it cost Wilmer? Is it good for our long-term vision or just short-term? Short-term, it looks good because of the economy and the money gonna be pumped in. Long-term, we could have another Regency Southwest or an Elm Lane. We went through that. We know what goes on. Other point, if we were sitting here tonight and there was a fellow out there that wanted to put a strip joint, a nude dancing in Wilmer, there's probably three spots you could do it in Wilmer. He met all the hoops, all the requirements. I don't think you or any of the councilmen would be up here saying, well, we gotta let this thing go. We gotta, we gotta put it in here. You know we wouldn't be doing that. And we passed an ordinance here several years ago to that effect. They had to be so many hundred feet away from a church, a school, a business, et cetera. But there are three or four spots in Wilmer that you could fit one. They jumped through all the hoops and they meet the requirements. You're telling me you would say, go ahead, let's put this thing in? That would be bad for Wilmer. As this project would be bad for Wilmer. Wrong place, wrong time, wrong part of the economy. I've spent hours and days, my time has been consumed by this and people and their time. How this governing body cannot recognize that this is a poor place for the project? Wilmer doesn't need this project, whether it's southeast, southwest, northeast, northwest. We don't need it. We've got homes in Wilmer that are dilapidated, for sale, sitting empty, could be bought by this organization, and the city could help them. We could remodel them, fix them up, give them some TLC, put our poor and low, low, low-income and low, low-income people into those homes. Integrate them into the community, one neighborhood at a time, one house in a neighborhood at a time. This is the wrong way to do it. Folks across the country, they're tearing across, they're tearing down congregant housing for the low-income and the poor. It isn't the way to do it. You're asking for trouble. Talk to our police chief, Mr. Jim Callsett. He'll tell you. Where most of the calls are from the police department across the city, 2007, the top eight, or the eight of the top 20 were to these low-income congregant housing units. The Willow Runes, the Regency East, the Regency West. How this governing body can't recognize a bad project and a bad place is beyond me. I don't understand it. It's, I, I'm at a loss for words. It's tearing the city apart. We all know it. Are we gonna let it continue to? And what this governing body has against my ward, I don't know. Tenth and Candy High flooding, we have a guy in 15th Street that can't live in his house, and you want to come and put this in southwest Wilmer? And how one of our representatives of that ward cannot represent these people is beyond me. At what point does this governing body decide to represent people? Government politics is not about people, it's about ideas. This is a bad idea, folks. This is a bad idea.
Any other comments here? Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Mayor, I move the previous question.
I have one question, if Mr. Christiansen would entertain it. Earlier you said that if the vote didn't go your way, that there may not be a quorum here, or at least you were implying that. How do you know that?
I don't. I just said, it takes a quorum. Takes a quorum to pass another motion that will be made to, whether to put West Wind back in or whatever. It'll take a simple majority. But you have to have, I will leave if that motion is made. If that's what you're asking, yeah, I will leave. I don't know who else will or what else will happen, but I will leave because I won't be part of that discussion. I, I.
Okay.
This thing is being, this, this project is being crammed on our throats, and not by just somebody from outside of town telling us what we need in our city. It's being crammed on our throats by four council members and someone who would break a tie. Come to the meeting tonight over here at this, this appeals board and see if there's anybody interested in it from the city of Wilmer. I've had more than, I don't know, 100, 150 contacts, emails, phone calls. I can't go out in public without people dragging me aside and saying, keep doing what you're doing, Wilmer doesn't need this. And not one person has called and told me that they're for this thing. I would dare say that if you give me 10 people that reside in Wilmer, taxpayers, other than the council and city staff, I'll show you 100 people that think this is a bad project.
Okay, you weren't implying then that four people were gonna walk out of the meeting?
Me.
Okay.
I speak for Ron.
All right. We have an amendment on the table. Are you ready to vote on that? That's to take West Winds out of the project list. Ready to vote? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That amendment or that resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Christiansen?
Could I ask the state council to consider one more amendment to the, the motion? I'm not even sure if this is the appropriate time, but you'll recall, following the improvement hearing, I had made a recommendation that the Landmark Business Park be treated as a developer cash project. And the reason for that was, at that, I believe, March 7th meeting, we didn't have any of the detail work completed for this project. And we were lacking development agreement, the property hadn't been platted, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All of that work has now been completed, and we received the development agreement and security that we need to move forward to take that cash-only restriction off and place it in the general improvement program and assess to the property owner.
Is that 0804 on this list?
Yes, sir. And there's a portion of 0807 as well, the, the street lighting.
All right. So you need a motion to include it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
In the project list?
Yeah.
Okay. Would any council member like to do that? So move.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a little confused because we just-
Anytime, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to include the Landmark Business Park and Landmark Business Park lighting. Councilmember DeBlique?
As an assessed project, Mr. Mayor.
As an assessed project.
That's, that was my question, and that is the change from this list. Okay.
From cash to assessment.
Both of them are assessed. Okay. Comments about that or questions about that? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Now we are back to the original motion that was made with the amendments and with the addition of Landmark Business Park. The amendments took out West Winds Third Edition and West Winds Street Lighting. And then we also took out the detention pond at Garfield. Is there any more discussion or more comments or more questions before we vote on the remaining motion here? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, on the Landmark Business Park, did you say it was previously a cash? He was gonna do cash and now he wants to assess it? Was the difference?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions about this? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes, so the street improvement project as amended is now passed for 2008.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any more discussion? Anybody? We are adjourned. No. Ask for a roll call.
You had, you had Councilmember DeBlique with-
Councilmember DeBlique?
Before we adjourn, I was just gonna ask to be excused from the April 7th meeting.
All right, April 7th? April 7th. Any other comments? You're asking for a roll call on adjournment?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments? Roll call.
Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlique?
No.
Reese?
No.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Swenson?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays.
Well, I've got another meeting to go to.
It's a tie vote. The motion fails. The motion fails. We are not adjourned then. We are not adjourned then. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the West Winds Estates Third Edition, 0807 and... Excuse me, and 0805.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve West Winds Estate, 0807, and 0805. Comment or discussion about that?
It's out of order, Mr. Mayor, when there's no quorum.
You're right. So there's no business can be done, no discussion, no nothing?
You certainly can't make any motion and certainly can't take any vote. You want to discuss things?
All right, so you can't make any motion at all then?
I believe not.
No motion you can make is to adjourn.
Yep. All right. Is there any discussion that councilmembers wanted to make here or engage in? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we've just seen is possibly one of the most childish actions that elected officials could take. It is incredible to me that people can act as petulant children. Our oath that we take, every single one of us took, is to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of this state, and to the city of Wilmer. We're supposed to be here doing the people's business. And for people to consciously leave in an organized effort... And I have serious questions as to whether or not the open meeting law was violated when you see this action is incredible to me. I have had more than enough of the personal insults and I've had more than enough of the people, and not all the people, but the people who come to my store, who call me on the phone, who call me at home and don't want this project because they don't want those people. Those people in their neighborhood. And when I ask them who those people are, I get the answer Hispanics and Somalis. We don't want them. And that's disgraceful. I have no doubt in my mind that the courts are going to decide this because obviously we have a council divided. We have a council with a minority of people who will not even participate in this vote. Usually when you have four members and a fifth who has the authority to break the tie, that's called a democratic majority. This has long been decided by the council. Our work should be done here. And I have no doubt that this project will be built. And I have no doubt that in five or 10 years, people will wonder what all the fuss was about. To compare this to Elm Lane, to compare this to Regency East or West is ludicrous. We are talking about a home ownership opportunity for people who have incomes, for people who have credit ratings, for people who work in our city. And you cannot zone by, I don't like my neighbor. And that's just disgraceful. Councilmember Reese said it correctly. We have laws and we have rules that we have to follow. And we have a portion of the membership of this council that wants to ignore all the rules and wants to ignore statutes, wants to ignore our own ordinances. You know, this is precisely one of the reasons why I asked that we consider rules of order for this council because the people expect better. They expect people to be here and do their job. And frankly, I'm sick and tired of the obstinance and the childishness that's taking place among members of the council. They need to be here.
Any other comments from the members of the council? Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further comments? We are adjourned.